Sorry, we will not have the TV tonight, it's not communicating. But we are taping. Bastian, Clark, Fish, Housman, Parsons, Wakefield, Mayor Lundberg.
Here. Very good. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions from administration or council?
We'll take 10E concession stand agreement off. Yep.
I look to approve without amendment.
Hold on. Let me add a little bit here myself. I wanted to add Casey Sanu requested to talk about the agent letter of record, and I place that under item 11C, the agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services. And is there any reason we need to go into executive session tonight?
Yes.
Yes, okay. With those amendments, can I have a motion now?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the agenda as revised. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of the February 28th and March 4th meeting minutes. If I can have a motion on those.
I did have a correction on underneath compensation for committees. We have Water Development Committee and Development Committee, so it should be Water Development Committee and Water Conservation Committee.
It's the Development Committee. It's Chuck's committee.
Oh, that's the Development.
Foundation.
The ad hoc one?
I didn't understand that motion. My bad.
So good as written?
I do.
If I can have a motion to approve then?
So moved.
Motion in second to approve the minutes of February 28th and March 4th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a listing of bills and claims on the agenda for approval next.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the bills as submitted with the agenda. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One item on the consent calendar of lots 3A, B, C, and D of Block 6 in the Sunrite Estates addition. If I can have a motion to approve that consent item?
Second.
Motion in second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right now it's time for anyone that wishes to address the council, may do so at this time. Any questions, comments?
Is it on on the side? Hang on a second, Gary.
Thank you. My name is Gary Sanu. I'm Casey's dad, and I'm proud of it. I'm here to react to the meeting of March 4th, which I felt was sort of a staged event. I want to thank Donna, Joe, for her support, and also I'm here to make a point that I've known Paul Lundberg for nine years when I was on the school board. He's an outstanding person, and I would vote for him hands down. So there's my support to Paul. And congratulations, Paul, to your latest award. We've, my wife and I are graduates of Brandon, 1962. My wife's 1963. We left, we came back home to be close to her parents, who were residents here for 70 years. So we have a little history to go by there. And my father-in-law would have said he was a good person, hard worker. He would say, Gary, if it ain't broke, what in the hell you fixing it for? And just because they say it doesn't mean it's necessarily so. So it's as simple as that. However, apparently you want to make it harder than that. So in 1977, I came back from teaching, and we located here in Brandon. My insurance office has been in my home, it's still there today. At one time, I office in Rushmore Plaza with Gene Johnson, and Mike Schmidt happened to be mayor of Brandon. And that was a good, a good mix. I became involved with an out-of-state agency that wanted to make their presence in South Dakota and Sioux Falls. I was the guy. So after getting started here, I established, they established an office for me in Sioux Falls. And I've been there ever since because of certain factors. They left the state. So I provide office space for my son Casey. My main emphasis today in retirement years is a consultation to him and to my clients that I have remaining. Casey has taken over my block business, which is not small by any means. So to compare a self-employed person or a sole proprietor to an agency is kind of nitpicking. Recently, I traveled to western South Dakota on some business, basically monkey business. I had made some contacts, and I stopped in a small town, West River. And they knew I was coming, and the young lady met me. And I had forgotten all about her. I was there to see her dad, who was a very well-known person. And while I was there, waiting for her dad to arrive, she says to me, Gary, do you remember meeting me in Brandon? I said, no. She says, you're the insurance guy, aren't you? Yeah. She says, what in the world is going on in the city of Brandon? I said, would you like to come back? She said, no. And she went on right down the line, been in the news, on social media, and talks amongst friends. So we left, and we did some business, and I came back the next day and talked some more. And then I had another set up to see some people in Pure while I was out west. This individual owns a small business downtown Pure. His business is in contact with every school in the ESD, including Brandon. And when he comes here, sometimes he'll call. And it started in again. Gary, what's going on? And I tried to explain a few things, and I said, really, I don't have a full grip on it, but after last week, I do have a full grip on it. And no matter where I travel, and I've got extensive contacts all over the state, and especially around Sioux Falls, the same issue comes up. And I'm kind of embarrassed, to tell you the truth. But I've supported Brandon my whole life. That's why we came back. That's why Casey came back and got into the insurance business, because he grew up in it. He had a terrific experience working with an agency in Sioux Falls called Olson &amp; Associates. Great, great people. And I think Amy is, has part of the agency now in Brandon with McKinney, I believe. So his, he cut his teeth with them. He came to me after things there were not as they should have been, and changes were coming. And I said, you better think about this. I didn't encourage him. He wanted to do it. So he came into, with me, and we've been doing joint work for years. He has taken over, done a super job. I'm very proud of him. So after last, two weeks ago, March 4th meeting, I'm sitting and watching this, and I'm thinking, did I hear what I heard? Is this, is this reality? Can, can people take a word from somebody and believe it? Or can you talk to probably Brian, who knows more about this than any else in the room, about what's been going on for 21 years? As Casey is the representative. In 21 years, I don't think there has been a problem. I don't think any person that works for the city has raised an issue. Not one in 21 years. Not a one. I call this in the insurance business, and it's not a good word, but I better skip it. So, so there's two people that know more than anybody else going on in the employee benefits. It's Brian, and it's my son. I don't know if they've been involved in your decisions. Apparently not would be my guess. So a little history, where I'm coming from, my past experience, what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing, and it involves my son, too. So thank you for the opportunity, and I wish you would reconsider your vote. I don't think the transparency has been addressed here. Casey had built a home when he first came here on Chicory. Outgrew it, decided they want to be in an acreage on Redwood. Well, find a nanny, beautiful setting. And then, of course, a lot of new homes being built. That wasn't what they were there for. So they find a property in Hidden Valley, which is between two grade schools, and that's where they live now. Not in the city, but it's in the school district. They have two children. They've been in the school district, still are. And lo and behold, I'm thinking about what's been going on here. It's deeper than we all think, and maybe I'm overthinking it, but we have a policeman, a local guy. He wants to get in law enforcement. Where does he come? Back home, to be here. My son, same way, local. He wants to be around family. He wants to come back. Fine, come back, get involved in the business. And what happens? You're here, you're local, you're not good enough anymore for some reason. What does that say to young people? It's pretty negative, if you ask me. Thank you for your consideration.
Kim.
Kim Surwicke, 812 South Nicholas Avenue. I have a poignant question just for Tim Wakefield Jr. Do you know who the administrators are of the Facebook page City of Brandon SD The Dirt?
No way I might do that.
This page has slandered me and others in this community with flat-out lies. I ask again, do you know who the administrators are of the Facebook page City of Brandon SD The Dirt?
Not involved, don't know. I've tried to find.
As of yesterday afternoon, I am being harassed personally as I was sent a private message that reads, "We wanted to give you a heads-up that we are working on a story that involves you having an affair with," and I'm not going to name this person. "You're welcome to contact us to give your side of the story, if you like." The unnamed person was in fact harassed by a known friend of yours, Tim, yesterday morning for not supporting you and supporting Paul Lundberg instead. He was also posed with a similar question about infidelity via text, without my name being connected at that point. I ask again, do you know who the administrators of the Facebook page City of Brandon SD The Dirt are?
I do not, Kim.
Can others from the community that disagree with you or flat-out do not support you expect harassment and character assassinations under your administration? I truly believe you know who runs that site, and I wanted to be sure that this is on public record before the truth comes to light. I have born and raised in this town. I have put my blood, sweat, and tears into this town, and I will not sit back and let you assassinate my character or anybody else in this community. Thank you.
So to be clear, I'm not assassinating your character. There's a page that is. I'm not aware of who's running it. I've talked to my friends, as you would say. I'm not aware.
Anyone else that needs, wishes to address the board?
I own Gypsy Trading Company at 515 North Split Rock Boulevard. I have a homestead brewery here that is looking at getting the approval for a two-day beverage license to be involved with McCarty Park. I also requested someone from Fernson to be here. I don't see the guys I know, but I can represent them if you have any questions.
You're actually under the job.
Oh, it's right here under the.
It's under public, it's under visitors, and it's also under.
Well, since I'm here. And this seems appropriate.
Tell us what you think, Allison.
Can I, can I be frank with you guys, just for a brief moment? As a business owner in Brandon, I can tell you the whole social media thing kind of needs to stop. You know, I don't, I'm not, I wasn't born and raised in Brandon. I came to a couple farm parties in high school, but that was my extent up until about five years ago. And as a business owner in Brandon, this hot mess is really affecting us. You know, my mom was in real estate for 40 years. I did real estate prior to this. I have customers come into my store all the time talking about how they don't want to move to Brandon because of it. That they looked at it, and as much as they love our schools, they don't want to move to Brandon because of all the stuff going on. And, you know, those people not moving here affects us. It affects my business directly. You know, there's other people here that are business owners. You know, the, I am a guilty pleasure person, and I am a member of most of these pages, just because I sit in the background and, and watch the chaos. But it's just, I just, whoever is in charge of the pages and whoever is doing these things, and if they're in this room or not, I don't know, but it just really needs to stop because you're not, you're, you're affecting more than, you know, pissing off Kim or pissing off someone else. You're, you're affecting people's businesses, and you're affecting people's livelihoods, and, you know, I don't know if anybody knows this, but I just sank my entire life savings into building a building here two years ago. And if that's not successful, my kids don't have a roof over their head. So this whole social media thing needs to stop. You know, so I hope that, you know, no city is perfect, but we're trying to do positive things for Brandon. And I don't know Mr. Sanu, but like he said, you know, you can go all over the place. I have family in North Carolina that knows about this stuff that's going on in Brandon, because they see it through my social media, you know, that I'm a part of the different pages, or they see it through just the stuff on the news with the water. And it's, it's just, as a business owner, to whomever is doing this, I just ask that you please stop, because you're hurting my business. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. It is very disheartening. On the part of good news, as mayor, I'd like to take a moment just to recognize the boys and girls' basketball teams and their state championships, and the positive that they brought to the community of Brandon. Very good thing. Coach Deckard, Coach Statham, terrific results. A lot of young men and women that we're very, very proud of. Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board? Okay. By gosh, it looks like we have a public hearing on a two-day malt license.
Come back up, Allison.
Does anybody from the council have any questions for, listen, first of all, Brian, you want to, we're pretty much up to snuff on, aren't we? Yep. Any questions from the council? From Lissa?
Nope. Obviously, our park has taken a beating here in the last week with ice. Is there anything that you are looking at for changes that you would need to support from us, or?
Nope. The north half, yep, got beat up pretty good, but the peninsula still looks pretty fantastic. We went out there today with Devin and walked around. So Brian and I, and Christina and I chit-chatted, and I think we're still good, as long as, you know, really ice-cold beer would make that whole storm really a lot more acceptable. So if I can get, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven thumbs up.
Well, I think you're in a good position to have ice, so.
Yeah.
There'll still be some there for the.
Kind of dirty ice, but.
For the brillers.
Take it.
But if there's anything that comes up, I know Devin's been very supportive in the past, so just let us know, please.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been a motion in a second to approve the two-day malt beverage license at McCarty Park. I will just, I can just make one comment. I talked to longtime resident Jim Ryder. He said he remembers back in 1977, these ice chunks.
Yeah.
He said they were still there July 4th, so.
Yep.
He remembers them, it happening back then, and them trying to cut them then, and, and they were still there on July 4th, so.
I just got goosebumps. I hope not.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I want to make a comment to all the, to all the social media stuff, and I know there's so much negativity and so much, I'm just going to say, so much crap out there that talks about our beautiful city. But what I really want to talk about is let's not focus on the negative, let's focus on the positive. If you guys are on social media, you know what? Put positive posts out there, and really brighten up our city, brighten up our community. Don't let these haters win. There's so many haters on social media. They don't have a life, is what their problem is. No life whatsoever. We all have lives. We're all very positive people, and let's show that to them on social media. Don't let that hate and negativity win. As a wonderful business owner, you have a beautiful building. I would love to see it filled up, you know? And just like all the other buildings that are coming around, let's fill those buildings up. Let's do positive things within this community. Brett started Brandon Strong, hashtag. I don't really understand the hashtag stuff, but it's a hashtag Brandon Strong. So let's continue on with that. And you know what? Let the haters and the negatives go out that way. And let's talk about positive and build the city up with greatness. That's what I got to say.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Moving on to item 7C, we have a public hearing on the reading of ordinance 578 regulating the number of open building permits at one location. Brian, you want to just briefly?
Sure. Planning zoning, had a public hearing on it and approved this. This would, right now, you can have no more than two building, open building permits on a property at this point in time. This would take that requirement off of commercial industrial and leave it on residential only.
Questions or comments from the council, or if not, I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second to approve first reading of ordinance 578. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no golf course committee report.
Oh, I do.
You can't have a golf course committee report.
I do. Okay. So obviously, there's flooding and ice. Zane told me that Kelly's working on some ideas to possibly get rid of the ice, but as of this afternoon, it looks like the Split Rock will crest again this weekend. Maybe that'll take some of the ice chunks out of there, so. Zane also said this year's shaping up to be a very good year for outings. There is a large amateur event that's going to happen in July, I believe, that will bring over 100 golfers to town, so they're getting ready for that. And then April 13th of next month will be the kickoff of when things traditionally start out there with the Masters, stuff like that. And then Carrie reported that she's having one of her better years yet to, as far as booking wedding events, so that's off to a good start.
Good.
Very good.
And then Tammy is going to be working with both Zane and Kelly to do some of our zero-scaping projects that we talked about out there, so that will be coming up.
Good.
So, here's my golf committee report.
Very good. Thanks, Chuck. Under the police committee, we have a salary adjustment for Tyler Sarda. What am I trying to say is?
His annual.
Annual review.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions from the board there, or comments from chief?
No.
Yeah, he's, he's best, and, and we are recommending that he receive his adjustment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the salary adjustment for Tyler Sarda on his annual review. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a retirement letter from Sir Lieutenant Wade Else.
Yes, we do. April 1st would be his last day.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Nobody wants a second.
Motion in second to accept the resignation letter from Lieutenant Wade Else, effective 4/1/19. Any discussion, or?
Just one.
Questions, comments?
Just one question. Shoot, sorry.
Does that position then get filled by someone else? Do we have a?
That'll be a decision that's made down the road. I am not going to probably make that. We'll work with the new chief on how he wants to progress.
Okay, thank you.
How does this impact us staffing-wise?
Oh, we're going to be short, we're going to be short one.
Okay. And then I think you answered the other question I had about backfilling it, but we'll have to wait for that. You know, I, I guess one of the comments I want to make is, you know, 28 years is a long time to put into a department, and so many great things have been said to me from residents and just people that know Wade, so this is a very sad time for me to, to see this retirement, but I truly wish Wade and his family the best as he moves on to retirement and has new opportunities that arise.
Thank you for your service. Any other questions?
We said to see him go.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to the parks and recreation committee report, do you have a work report in your agenda?
I want you to do the hiring procedure.
I want you to do the hiring procedure.
There was an item C.
Yeah.
Oh.
Hiring procedure.
Sorry. Go ahead. Well, it's in your, I believe it's in your packet. I mean, I can, got it on my phone, but it kind of lays out what the, what the hiring process is and about how much time it'll take. Any questions or comments from the council?
Paul, I have a question.
Lisa.
You know, we talked about the interplay of the veterans' preference. I can tell the council that I've reached out to the city attorneys in South Dakota, the state's attorneys in South Dakota. Nobody has addressed the issue of eligibility lists and how the interplay of requiring the veterans' preference to apply so that applicants can be considered for interviews if they meet the minimum qualifications. So I can just tell you, there's nobody out there that has been discussing this. I don't see in here how long the eligibility list is going to be maintained. Some, some police departments, sheriff departments maintain them for a year, two years, some six months. And I don't, there's nothing out there that really says anything about an eligibility list and how that interplays with, if you're not on the eligibility list, and the eligibility list is six months, or a year, or 18 months, or three years, and some veteran wants to apply and they don't know about an opening, whether they get to apply, if you're going to consider that or not. So it's kind of an open issue. There's penalties involved if somebody wants to challenge it. We've talked about those. There's a class 2 misdemeanor that can be assessed by the court if we violate it. So when you're considering the hiring, I can't tell you that there's anything out there to provide guidance. All I can tell you is the statute says, if you have a veteran that's going to apply and they meet the minimum qualifications, they're supposed to be given an interview. I can't tell you how that plays in with an eligibility list. They certainly have the right to. They certainly have the right to apply to be on the eligibility list, but if it's out there for an extended period of time, does that really give them notice and an opportunity to apply if they have the minimum qualifications? So it's something you just need to consider. If you want to have the eligibility list and not allow people to apply if they're not on the eligibility list, my recommendation would be to not have a super-long eligibility list, I mean, have it for six months, not more than a year, so that if somebody does move in and they want the opportunity to apply and they're a veteran, at least it isn't sitting out there for two years and they really aren't gonna be able to apply and get on the list. So just some comments, how you want to handle it is up to you, obviously, just wanted to give you some input.
I did, I did call around to a number of places. There are, there are some that don't run eligibility lists. One example, as far as an extended eligibility list, would be for the fire department in Sioux Falls, where they go through their process and once they establish that, they have, they maintain an eligibility list up to two years. And I specifically asked them if that was vetted through their attorney's office and their, their HR department, and, and that's what I was told, that they considered the veterans' preference. I do agree that you can, you can have a list for too long, you know, two years for, for us would probably be too long. A year to 18 months, probably more realistic. You know, it's, it's, yeah. The example I use, though, would be probably the, the fire department over in Sioux Falls. The police department over in Sioux Falls, they're hiring all the time, and, and so they take applications every month and can't keep up with their hiring. So that's just food for thought. Did you check with Sioux Falls by chance on that, or?
I actually do their work for them, so I can tell you that they, they have not gotten a legal opinion on the integration of it, so.
Good. So I guess I have a couple of simple questions on this. With this roster, if you will, would we integrate this into other positions in the city? That, whether it be like the positions we just filled, or, or part-time staff in the summer, would we do anything like that, or is this just solely specific to police department?
Right now, I don't, I don't see it extending to other positions in the city because we do add an extra step with the police department, that is, the, the testing that we put the applicants through. It usually takes an additional two to three weeks. We don't do those, it's a four-part test, chief.
Well, we do, the initial thing is the, the written test.
Yep.
And, and then, once a conditional job offer is granted, then we go into the psychological, the physical, the drug test, and background investigation, and, and that's a time-consuming process.
So there's additional steps when you hire a police officer that, that we in the office nor in public works are necessarily subject to?
And then, would this roster also be used for promotions? For example, we have lieutenant position open now, would we be utilizing this in any way, shape, or form, comparing it to our internal applicants?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate that.
I had another one, but it's, we've lost it, so we're gonna go with that. Are we expecting a motion on this tonight?
Yeah, to authorize the hiring process and to develop, I think the request from chief would be to establish a hiring list for 12 months.
Yeah, and, and we would like to start the process by advertising, have an HR advertise for, for applications, and, and then work through the process. And again, it's, it's 12 weeks or, or longer to get to that point where we fill that, that open position that we currently have.
And you'd keep this active for a period of one year, is your preference?
One year at 18 months.
I think, I think, I think one year.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be my recommendation, that we keep it for one year.
And I would, I would say one year from the time that the list is certified. In other, other words, the testing has gone through, you've gone through the application process, you've gone through the testing process, and you've gone through the interview process, and, and then you can establish the list, and then after that is when you have an opening, then you give the job offer, and then you kick in the psychological, the physical, the background investigation.
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve for the one year.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
So I just remembered the other question. So once this list is created, it'll be eligible for a year. If we have a position open six months down the road, this would not be something that another individual could apply for and get onto the list, is that correct?
That would be, that would be the application, the way we would go about it, yes. And to clarify, the veterans' preference would kick in to this process. One of the minimum qualifications, though, is passing the written test, and, you know, and then not being a felon and things like that. Okay, motion and second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Christina, I'm gonna ask you to call the roll to just get on record.
Bastian.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Housman.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Motion carries, five to one. Thank you. Thank you, chief. We have an agreement with Swim America to use our pool facilities.
They conduct swimming lessons at our pool in between the time that we end our swimming lessons every day to the time we have open swim. So this will be a contract with Swim America for $250. Park Committee reviewed this a couple of weeks ago and approved it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agreement with Swim America to utilize our swimming pool facilities. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have Resolution 1019, capital outlay accumulations of $50,000 a year for the splash pad park, is that correct, Brian?
Correct. We talked during budget time that we would like to start putting money away for the construction of a splash pad. The feasibility study is, is soon to be completed. We included $50,000 in the 2019 budget. We can accumulate that amount, or that funds for five years, and it must be used specifically for this item.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the Resolution 1019 accumulating capital outlay proceeds in the amount of $50,000 a year. Are there any questions or comments?
With this, is there any need for us to wait to do this until after we've got the research back? Because once we lock into this, we have to spend money on the splash pad, so would it be, make more sense for us to wait to allocate this until after we get those results, understand the cost, that sort of thing? I'd just get nervous if a splash pad comes in at a significant dollar value that doesn't fit our budget, you know, once we're locked in, we're locked in. I guess I'd like to see the results of that research before I make a motion on this.
That's up to, that's up to the council. I know Park recommended it. We're just establishing what was approved in the budget, so that's up to the council.
It's a very high priority of the Parks Department.
Yeah, the Park Board, you guys okayed it, right? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
I think we, yeah, we already have a motion and a second, yes. Any further discussion? Christina, would you call the roll on this?
Bastian.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Housman.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Motion carries once again, five to one. Next item on the, on the agenda is to request to extend the date at McCarty Park for the...
McCarty Market.
Fun of the parks, yeah.
Council approved it April 19th and 20th. Ellison is requesting that, that we extend that to Thursday so that the vendors can set up after 5:00 PM.
Do we need to have the motion?
Could.
I just think there's probably something we have to take into account.
Yeah, Lisa just said, including, if you want to approve it, include in the motion that they're authorized to leave stuff there overnight.
Yeah.
Make the motion to approve and leaving their stuff there overnight.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have some quotes on the roll-up doors at the pool. The low quote was from Overhead Door Company. Any questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion to approve the...
Second.
Motion and second to approve the low quote from Overhead Door for the doors down at the pool. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council review of employee concerns. Lisa, you handed out some materials tonight.
The previous meeting, I provided to you just some administrative policies. Within those administrative policies was one policy in particular on if an employee wants to meet with the city council or the mayor, what type of policy should we have in terms of, do you need to first visit your supervisor, the administrator, department had things of that nature? So I received some comments, just a couple of them, from council members. Page two of your handout there under item 4B as in boy, the first one was as drafted, the second one, I added some language, and the third one is I added some different language based upon a second comment that I received today. So I did receive comments last time about putting something like this in the handbook. It really is whatever policy you want to have in terms of, do you want to have it just set for employee concerns, where the employee wants to speak to the whole council, what's the process, as opposed to if Tammy needs to talk to Tim about something, we're not talking about that. I mean, she should be able to visit with him about that, or vice versa. So the third one really addresses that type of situation where you're talking about somebody wanting to be heard by the full council. It's really whatever policy you guys want to adopt. I'm happy to draft whatever it is, and it doesn't need to be set tonight, but last meeting, we just kinda talked about, talking about it this meeting. And then, the first page also, I didn't receive any comments from anybody about any of those administrative policies, so.
So this 4B is like three choices?
Yeah.
That's three options?
Yep, three different ideas of what we have in there, because I didn't really hear from everybody, so I can change it again however you guys want it, I just need to know.
On the first page, I was thinking that we had come up with noon Wednesday to get items on the agenda, this is Monday, because I would ask that we change that back to Wednesday, or else we're potentially waiting three weeks to have something on the agenda.
If you want the agenda out on a timely basis, Wednesday is too late. We as staff need time to look at agenda items before we put them on the agenda. If you look around and you ask around one week prior to the regular meeting, it's a pretty typical timeline to get requests to be on the agenda for most communities.
I think we could compromise if there's something that's requiring literature to go with it, or, I, I mean, like, like this officer hiring procedure wasn't on there Thursday night, it's on there now, I mean, so we can clearly do it in a very short period of time.
It will certainly, you know, with the Monday deadline, a week prior to the regular meeting, it will certainly change the way we do business. Right now, we're fairly flexible, up until, you know, we'll put things on the agenda, you know, Wednesday up until 5:20. But if you want a hard and fast rule, that we've got to get the agendas out and posted and the packet on the website, we need to have time to do that and do that correctly. If this, quite frankly, that hiring procedure wouldn't have been on this agenda, that would need to wait until the next one. So we're gonna have to speed up and, and move our, the way we do it as staff anyway, about a week ahead of time. I mean, if you want stuff done by a certain time, then we need to have hard and fast deadlines. Because we, quite frankly, we as staff aren't gonna get in trouble if we miss a deadline.
Amen.
That's what it boils down to.
I guess, from, from my standpoint, I think it's more important to have information ahead of time to review. I would rather see us make the cutoff like you suggested, Ryan, but then have more time to review it before. So instead of having delivered to the council by noon on Thursday, I would rather see that by close of business Wednesday, so that at least we have an evening to review the council packets before we go to the briefing meeting. That's my personal opinion, it's nice to come prepared to that because then we can ask questions. You know, a lot of us do have day jobs, getting in at noon on Thursday means we're not reviewing it until we're sitting here in this seat. So, you know, I, I think if we're gonna talk about timelines and deadlines, I guess my question would be, if we wanted to have the council packet in our seat, in our emails by close of business Wednesday, what is the drop-dead time for you to add something to the agenda?
You know, I'd still probably make it at noon on Monday.
And I don't know if there's something you'd want to have, like absent, extant circumstances, every now and then there's, there is something you want to get on and the statute says 24-hour notice. It may be something simple like a plat or a deed or something that just didn't get there and we got to get done, so I think we want some flexibility, but not for things that are really of substance unless there's some reason they really need to get on there, but I guess some flexibility in the policy would be helpful if there is something really urgent. Usually there isn't, but that's my only comment about that policy.
Is there some kind of verbiage that we could do for that? Because I guess, you know, I, I'm not opposed to having noon on Monday with an emergency clause or however you would do that, and then, you know, still have the packet delivered by close of business Wednesday. If we went that route, then we'd kinda have the ability, and if something happened on Tuesday and whatever it is, a plat or something like that, like you said, Lisa, we could still make that happen because we're not gonna be in breach of South Dakota qualified law, but I mean...
If, if you notice in the, in this, the last sentence of that paragraph, it says after the briefing meeting, the agenda or revised agenda may be modified. So we do add some things from time to time based upon discussion at the, at the briefing meeting, so that would probably cover those, those things.
As long as it was discussed at the briefing meeting?
Yep.
And as one that's been responsible for preparing agendas and getting board packets available for 29 years, the noon deadline on Thursday appears to be an appropriate deadline to me. We all have different jobs and different responsibilities, but when we sign that piece of paper that we come up here, we really have to make it work. We just have to hump up and make it work, so it's just very, very difficult for staff to get these things organized and put together in the, in the timeframe that they're talking about. So I would support the noon on Thursday. I believe that's why we have a briefing meeting every Thursday, to discuss these items that come on the agenda.
Noon on Thursday to get it.
This says noon on Monday.
Yeah, the noon on Monday, but I'm talking about the preparation of the agenda to the, to the council members.
Oh, that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Noon on Thursday, to me, is an appropriate date.
This is one of those cases where if it's not broke, don't fix it. It's been working fine.
And as I said, I think that's why we have a briefing meeting to, to discuss that, those agenda items, so that's the time that we can, and we get, just gotta hump up and, and get her done between noon Thursday and 5:30 Thursday.
And no action on these is necessary tonight, because you've got to take a look at those three paragraphs on 4B. I can take a look and see if we can come up with some language for emergency items, et cetera.
I would concur with that and suggest that the council review all of these and communicate any suggestions or other things that they would have to Brian. And you can communicate those on to Lisa, and we can have a final, final draft, ex-board meeting.
One thing to consider, Brian, that I've seen in the past, is on an emergency item like that, the resident would come present in the public speaking time of the briefing meeting, so that's their, if you didn't make the noon deadline, you can... So, that's their, if you didn't make the noon deadline, you can beg for forgiveness at the public comment.
We need to approve the election workers for April 9th, next. They were listed in your board packet. Any questions or comments? If not, take a motion.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the listing of election workers. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11C is approving a business associate agreement with Gallagher benefits. Uh, prior to that, I asked Casey Sanu, or Casey Sanu asked to address the council, and this is the point where I thought it would be appropriate for him to address the council.
All right. First of all, I just want to thank the, the city and the employees over the last 20 years and all past councils. That, I really appreciate it, the opportunity to represent you, be your agent. With that being said, I got some questions, some comments, um, that I want to ask. First of all, what initiated the agent of record, uh, change? Any of you or all of you can answer.
I can field a couple. We started looking at this last summer, and we were in the process of doing it, uh, this summer to get alternative, um, perspectives and alternative quotes. Um, and we ended up with a lot of delays and nothing ended up happening this summer. So, then it was delayed until, um, this winter, and then we started the process of the RFP. That's kind of, we're kind of doing that with everything.
Who'd you ask to get the, the, the quotes from?
Our personnel committee asked for those, and then Brian sent it out publicly, I believe, posted it, and reached out to some brokers.
That's, no, that's, that's not accurate at all. I was contacted in, in December to provide alternative quotes in December for January 1, which I did. Now, I don't know where, wherever those are at, but I did, I give alternative quotes in December. Nothing as of last summer. We renewed this group. Do you know when the renewal date is?
July 1st.
Yeah. So, we renewed it July 1st with a 7% decrease. We did not offer any type of alternatives. The, the council didn't want to see any, and neither did the administrator, because we had a 7% decrease. So, there was no public, uh, asking of proposals. Brian, am I, I mean, did I miss something there, or am I missing something? There was no private proposals made available in the summer of 2019.
No, not this summer. That's when we started looking at it, and we ran out of time, and we did nothing.
Oh, okay. If I misunderstood you, I thought you said that you didn't receive anything, and, okay.
No, we didn't do anything with it.
Okay. Because, and the reason I ask, on, you know, what initiated the AOR, which agent of record, for those of you in the, in the room here and maybe at the council that don't know, an agent of record is, is basically, in our world, I don't know about yours, in our world, it's, it's kind of the lowest form of obtaining business that you get. And basically, you've taken all, you take the work that somebody else has done, and they just, they write their name on it, and boom. Normally, an agent of record happens due to a fact of, maybe we're not servicing the, the client correctly. Maybe we, uh, we've, we've done something wrong. I don't, have you, has there been any, uh, issues with our service, or, I mean, I've never had a complaint from an employee, uh, an administrator, or, or a council in 21 years. So, I'm just wondering what initiated the, you know, the agent of record.
Well, the initiation was to look at other options for the city. It wasn't a slap on the wrist. It was that no other agent can look at Wellmark as long as you're the agent. So, you have that...
Yes, they can. They can quote Wellmark all day long.
They can't do anything with our plan.
I know. But why would, I can, I, you can ask me to do anything you want with the Wellmark plan, anything. I mean, you and I, you have not, are you, you're on the benefits committee, correct?
Yes. Well, there isn't a benefits committee.
Well, okay. Is, is it, is it odd that you and I have never met? I've never met you in my life. Is that odd?
I don't feel so.
Okay.
Casey, we're doing RFPs on, on everything. We're doing them on our engineering firms. We're doing them, you know, who knows? We might do it on the ambulance service. We don't know what we're up against, but there's nothing wrong with taking a look. And when we did decide to take a little peek this summer, we had another agent give us a whole lot of other, um, parameters within the plan, uh, or constraints within our current plan that's, that's grandfathered in on the small group, and she gave us a lot of ideas and suggestions of things to look at on the large group, and it sparked some intrigue in taking that process further.
I do that, I do that every year. I was never, I was never afforded the opportunity to give, in fact, well, I did, I did off, I did bring in alternate quotes. Uh, you can't, we can't provide alternate quotes right now, because you have, they're 90 days out. So, they won't release quotes right now, okay?
I understand.
So, the AOR, agent of record is just, it's, it's not even, it doesn't even make sense. That's why I got to question, what now, why now? Why are you doing it? And we would never been afforded the opportunity after being the agent here for 21 years? And then you don't, you and I have never met to discuss any of this stuff, or any, you know? I'm not, I'm not present, present at the council meetings? I mean, I think those are legitimate questions.
Well...
There's, there's nothing, there is nothing, I want this known in this whole room, there's nothing that RJ Gallagher can offer as far as employee benefits that I can't. Nothing.
I, I will disagree with that. I guess we'll hear from, gal from Arthur J. Gallagher, and get our thoughts on that.
That's, that's, that's great. That's great. I'm just telling you, they, they can't. There's nothing that, we have every carrier at our, at our disposal. Yeah, we're not 30,000, we don't have 30,000 employees, okay? But they don't either in South Dakota. They don't in Sioux Falls. They have a small office in Sioux Falls. So, and, and how do we, how do we get to the point of, how did we, how did we choose RJ Gallagher? Was there any discuss, I mean, how do we choose that? You didn't, nobody sought, you know, if, if I'm thinking I want to go out and tackle, run with the big boys, why are you not? Nobody contacted Holmes Murphy. Nobody contacted Hall Mc Dowell. Nobody contacted Silverstone. Those are supposedly the big hitters in, in Sioux Falls, but we come with RJ Gallagher. Why?
I'll defer to Brian on that, because that's what I was talking about that was posted, and we reached out to their entities. Our HR, our gal reached out to, I believe it was Holmes Murphy. She was shaking her head yes. I gave the name of another insurance agency several briefing meetings ago, and I asked if they were reached out to, and I was told that they weren't, because an address wasn't available for them. I, I didn't reach out to Arthur J. Gallagher, if that's what you're implying. Brian reached out, and Julia, HR gal, reached out, and then I believe it was posted for anybody to apply for. But that, I, it's over my head.
Brian, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, we advertised, uh, for the proposal, and I was instructed to, uh, send initial proposals to Holmes Murphy, Gallagher, and Casey Sanu.
I mean, I think it's a legitimate question. You know, I know that the, the conflict of interest has been addressed, and we somehow determined that it's not. When your spouse is an employee of theirs, you have a, uh, your office is a, your tenant, you have a tenant that's an RJ Gallagher, uh, employee, or whatever they are, I think it's a legitimate question.
And...
You know? It's, it's, it's the, yeah, if you want to read, if you looked at the RFP, one of the things it says is disclose any conflicts or perceived conflicts of interest with any employee. Now, I suppose we can get underneath what the legal word is, is, right? But to me, that's, that could be perceived as a conflict of interest. And from what I understand, they never did disclose that.
Gallagher benefits associates are not in my building. And if it makes you feel better, Gallagher won't be in my building in a couple of months.
Well, it would make, it would make me feel better as far as on the, uh, you know, for that. The other part I want to talk about is on the proposal, that it states, on the very first page of the proposal, and do not be late or incomplete. Here it is. Proposals must be received no later than 10:00 a.m., Friday, February 8th, 2019. My proposal was turned in on February, uh, February 7th, complete. I don't believe the other one was.
Was it complete? Because you...
Yeah, it was complete.
You were required to submit insurance for your business, and there was, there was no insurance submitted for financial insurance services.
Yes, there was. My errors and omissions coverage is in there.
For you personally, not for your business.
I don't need a business license, I don't need that. I don't need that.
Well, it was, it was part of the RFP, and Lisa has validated that we were able to move forward.
I, I don't need, as a, so I don't need that business license. I'm licensed in the state of South Dakota to sell insurance. That's all I need, and carry E and O insurance, which I do. Now, I understand you had some questions about my E and O. My E and O is to protect me, by the way, right? I think Mr. Wakefield said, oh, they have $17 million of, uh, of, uh, E and O. They got 30,000 employees. They got a lot more exposure. They may need it. They got a lot more people that can screw up than I do. So, the E and O's irrelevant on that. My address is irrelevant, you know? I look in this room, it, there's maybe three, the Huggies, Schollman, and my family, they'll live in here longer than anybody in this, in Amy Jordan's house, longer than anybody in this room. That doesn't, that doesn't mean anything, does it? We want change, so we're going to change, whether it's warranted or not. We can provide you, we have, we provide alternatives every year. Barb knows that. She's seen it. In fact, two years ago, we had, we had an alternative in here for, say, the city $143,000. City chose not to accept it. So, I'm just trying to set the record straight. I don't think you did your due diligence as a council, and I think you should, I think you should consider rescinding the agent of record request.
So, first of all, um, right now, we do not have a new agent of record until we make this agreement and vote on the agreement. Is that correct?
I submitted the agent of, uh, record request Friday.
But we have not gone into an agreement with...
Correct.
...the new agent of record. So, we've already submitted the change, but we haven't approved the agreement. Is that correct?
Correct, because the proposal was approved and accepted by the council, including the change of, of agent at the last council meeting. I went back and reviewed the minutes or the tape, video.
I guess I'm a little concerned that we don't have an agreement in place before we make a change, but, so today, the agenda item is to approve the agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, one of the questions that I have, Casey, is you're a sole proprietor, correct?
Correct.
What happens if something happens to you, sir?
Uh, then they'll, they'll have, it'll be left in good hands. It's not just going to go away. We work with, we work with brokers in Sioux Falls, you know, as it handled, that we're licensed through. So, they would be, if I didn't have a family member that wasn't going to take it over, then it would just fall to them.
Okay. Yeah, it's something that, that obviously concerns me a little bit, is, is a sole proprietor.
You'll have no interruptions in coverage or anything like that.
No, no, I'm not thinking that.
At that point, you can bring in RJ Gallagher. I mean, I, you know, I, that's, I understand your concern.
A concern that I have, uh, when working with a sole proprietor versus a business. Uh, you know, obviously, you have other clients as well, so, you know, you keep yourself busy, I hope, right? I mean, that's the point.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, at, at the end of the day, if there is something that were to happen to you, which I hope there never is, but at a certain point, you're going to want to retire too, right? So, at that point, what does that transition look like? Um, or if there's something that happens and maybe you're going to be gone for a while, uh, how do we get that covered? So, that was my question that I had, um, at this point.
Casey, thank you for coming up. Well, you're younger than me, so I know you're not going to retire for a while.
Yeah, I don't have any, I mean, I may look older than you, Joe, but I, you know...
I mean, it's going to be a while before you retire.
It's that life on Cedar Street makes us all a little harder, you know, so...
I know it. You know it. That was a fun time.
Yeah.
I have to tell you, I was really disheartened at the last council meeting, because when we looked at, I thought it was just to look at both proposals. I didn't know we were going to be accepting RJ Gallagher, especially since you made it in on time and they did not. So, that's why I voted nay for, um, voting for them, because the fact that you deserve, to me, you deserve it, because you got your information in on time. You did what you were supposed to do. They did not. The information was due in by 10:00 a.m. They got their last stuff in at 4:00 P.M. that day.
Yeah. I was told specifically, do not be a minute late.
Yeah.
That is grounds for dismissal.
Absolutely.
Do not be late.
Absolutely.
So...
You always have and always will have my vote.
Thank you.
Casey, you mentioned brokered contracts. Who, who do you have your, your carrier appointments through?
Uh, so, through Blue Cross, to be, or, uh, McGreevian Associates is our broker there. Uh, Sanford is Grayburn Associates. These are all very, very common practices in our business. Uh, Vera, I have a direct contract with Vera, and, uh, my United Healthcare contract is, is out of a, uh, an office in Fort Dodge. So, KHI Insurance.
Are you fully with Prince Insurance somewhere?
No. No.
With the discussion that's been presented tonight, I would ask the council if there's any motion or anything to reconsider. Agent of record, I believe, Brian, a motion to reconsider the agent of record has to be made by one of the affirmative votes previously.
Correct.
So, that would, that would have to be, anybody that voted yes previously, if they would like to make a motion to reconsider?
Would we be able to have the opportunity to meet the other agent?
I think so.
Just asking if there's any in the RFP that we've got to accept, if I have to...
So, I'm looking for a motion to reconsider from anybody?
What does that mean? That we're not...
That would withdraw the, the previous motion that we made last board meeting, uh, of changing the agent of record, that would be withdrawn, and, uh, we'd rescind that and reconsider the whole, the whole process, the bid process that we went through.
So, we have more discussion. It wouldn't necessarily...
Change, it wouldn't necessarily change the final outcome, but it would...
The other agent is here, we can have discussion.
Reconsider.
First. I would bank it, but I can't, so...
That's all right. Hey, I just wanted my time. I don't, I don't think that you guys, I, I don't think you have all the information. I, we were not given the opportunity to provide, uh, our information or our side of the information, you know? And all of a sudden, it's voted on, and, you know, I just, you got to make sure, you got to know what you guys were doing, what you're up against, you know? Because an agent of record is, like I said, most of my colleagues that are, and, and I consider them very ethical, we didn't, that's the last way you want to get business, is on an agent of record, because you didn't earn it. You know, other than the fact that, yes, if you did something, if you did a disservice to that client, yes, maybe it's warranted. I can tell you on one hand how many agents of records I've done in 23 years.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to reconsider, and we'll see where it goes.
Is there a second?
Can I second?
Is there a second? I don't believe you can. I'll ask again. Is there a second to reconsider?
I will second.
So, motion and a second to reconsider, uh, the decision of the agent of record of last board meeting, council meeting. Christina, I ask you to call the role on the question.
Ashton.
I wasn't present at the last meeting. So, can I vote? Uh, I...
Clark?
This is to, say that again?
Reconsider.
Name?
Name? Fish?
Aye.
Howman?
Aye.
Parsons?
Nay.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Motion passes 42.
What I'm going to do with it right now is, oh, I, I'm not sure what I'm going to do with it right now. Scratch that. I had what I was going to do with it. I had what I was gonna do with it. I wanted to refer this out of the, out of this public meeting and get it to a, a committee level to have some presentations. Is the board agreeable to that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're just reconsidering.
Right, right. So, what I would ask, Brian, what I would ask you, that we call in the applicants or the, the bidders on this RFP, and we have some interview process and go through the whole process more in depth than what we did the first time and go from there. And then we'll have another, yes, Lisa?
Was the motion to reconsider both the granting of RFP and the agent of record or just agent of record? Because you need both of them, I think, if you're gonna bring that up, you're gonna need to do it at the second meeting. So, if you're going to reconsider granting the RFP, you gotta have that in it too. Because right now, we had the motion last time to give the RFP to Gallagher. So, I thought your motion was simply to reconsider it. So, why do you all...
The intent of the motion was to reconsider the whole process that took place at the last board meeting, which was the agent of record and the, and the, and the RFP. So, I'm gonna direct you, Brian, to set it up, interviews, committee members, all that stuff, and go through the process and we'll proceed from there. Questions from the council?
I'm just gonna add one thing. So, one of the reasons that, um, I am moving forward or, or seconded that is because there's one piece of information that I'm missing that I'm, uh, makes me pretty uncomfortable with where we're at today. And that's we don't have the ability to compare apples to apples. And I asked Brian about this via email. And at this point, we don't have a direct comparison of your quote, which we already know, Casey, and the new, uh, firm. We don't have their prices. So, in order for me to make a decision, I wanna understand that we truly are comparing apples to apples and there is a potential cost savings.
Our quotes are gonna change. Our quotes are gonna change because, because of how you're structured right now. So, the quotes are gonna, you know, what you have currently is gonna change unless you was, you know, choose to keep, you know, stay where you're at. But if you make changes here, I mean, there's certain, we can, I mean, now we're gonna get into splitting hairs and we don't, probably not the time or place to do that. But there's ways you can keep your current coverage and there's ways you can lose your current coverage and then puts us into a whole nother market segment, which will change the cost. It's gonna, and that's gonna happen with, with, with them as well.
Coverages, coverages themselves are gonna be quoted the same from each company.
Yes.
There's very little...
So, what I'm getting at is, is when I go do my car insurance, the first thing I do when I go to a new agent is I say, "This is my existing coverage, quote exactly this."
Yep.
And then I can compare and say, "It's a potential savings." And then, once that ground is set, then if I want to listen to cost savings or different changes that can get me better coverage or cheaper rates, then we can do that. But for me especially, I wanna be able to, on an even playing field, understand those differences. When I look at the RFPs, there is information there, but there's a lot more to this than, than just what was shown in the RFP in my opinion.
Right, and I would ask...
Tim, and that's why we decided we wanted to go with one agent, because there's only a handful of carriers. So, you're pitting them up against, you bring two to the table and I'll bring two to the table, which doesn't work very well when you're trying to get advice and expertise from that agent. So, what we talked about in our personnel committee meeting the other night was we did wanna look at a renewal quote as is in the small group plan and see how it is shaping up, but then also provide some liberties to our agent to go out and get us quotes within the large group plan, provide us with some options and recommendations of different things that we can do to make our plan more current and find some potential cost savings and look at other things potentially to add into our, our portfolio as a whole to make it more comprehensive, like life insurance and disability insurance. So, that's why we narrowed it down to we need to pick an agent to represent us this year. It could be opened up every single year.
And Casey, that is where I'm coming from. I wanna see some new ideas and perhaps you presented them and I missed them. But that's the reason I voted the way I did before. So, I've been harping on this for a long time, Blaine and I. And so, I just want some new things to look at.
For sure. And that's, and that's always, we've, we've always provided what the city has asked for. If the city asks for it, we will provide it. We have, we've done that. Again, the last several years, we had very low, very low, we had actually a decrease last year of seven percent. I think the year before that was what, was it two or two point seven or something? So, they were minimal increases, especially in this market. And you kinda go, "Hey, chalk that, we chalked it up to a win and we move on," you know? But we present, like I said, a couple of years ago, I think you were on this council, there was a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar savings in here and we passed. So, it's something we do do.
Okay. That's what I was...
Yeah.
Brian, you all right? Got your marching orders?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Move on.
I was the last that we get the opportunity to meet Lisa Maka, because she was invited to come for this part of the agenda.
Okay, sure. That was on the agenda. Lisa?
Mr. Mayor, I would also ask that we, if we're doing a committee, we establish who those committee members are, please.
Come on aboard. Introduce yourself to the council.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lisa.
Turn on the purple button there.
There we go. My name is Lisa Maka and I work at Gallagher Benefit Services in Sioux Falls. So, um, I thank you for the invite tonight. It's been an interesting conversation and obviously important, which, you know, um, a lot of people have emotions and feelings and commitments. A lot of years of service have been provided, so it's not an easy decision when you're looking at options. As an agent, that's basically what I do is bring, try and bring options to the table, thinking outside of the box for our clients, making sure that they're in compliance. That's a huge piece of, um, what Gallagher brings to the table. So, I look forward to the opportunity to get to know your plan a little bit more, get to know what some of your goals are, and, um, see what we can do to bring some creative ideas to you and as you work through this, this whole process, so...
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Um, I know the, uh, the business associate agreement was on the agenda. Are there any questions on that or is that to be saved for in the committee?
Yeah. I think that's what we'll discuss, all those things, yes.
Okay.
I have a couple of quick questions. So, when we were talking about carrier appointments, are yours all direct or do you go through a bunch of other?
Our, our appointments are all direct. So, we have direct contracts with Wellmark, United Healthcare, um, Sanford, Avera. They're all direct contracts that we have with them.
And what might be the difference between Gallagher Benefits versus a sole proprietor, in your opinion?
I think one of the big things that we bring, um, to the table, um, is the compliance piece. We have, um, ERISA attorneys at our access. We have, um, HR tools and reviews that help a lot of, a lot of folks, especially small businesses. I mean, you guys have, have a lawyer on staff as well, so you're a little bit different than a lot of our employer groups. But probably the compliance, um, just the ideas that are brought to the table, because we do have, you know, you guys said, we have thirty thousand employees across the United States. Do we have thirty thousand employees in Sioux Falls? No, we have about twelve in our office. Um, but we have access to all of those resources right at our fingertips, so...
Very good. Thank you for your time, Lisa.
Thank you.
Mr. Wakefield brought up a question on who the committee members to delineate that, and I would assume that would be the Personnel Committee.
Historically, it's been Personnel Committee.
Council members?
Hi, Mom.
Hi, Mom.
Yeah.
Red, Joe, and Dana are the three on the Personnel Committee.
Everybody okay?
Yep.
Good.
You need to come on too.
Item eleven E, volunteer workers list. Brian, quickly.
Um, we had some volunteers come over and help fill sandbags last week on the thirteenth after the flooding. Uh, these folks just showed up and, and started filling sandbags for anybody that wanted to come and take them. So, uh, like anything else, we wanna get, um, them approved or at least recognized by the council. So, if there was a worker's comp claim, at that point in time, they would be covered.
I'd like to thank all of these volunteers and I'd like to specifically, specifically point out one young man that was, uh, noted by the main, or full-time maintenance people that went up and above everything in his work ethic and helping everybody out by the name of Donovan Rice. I think that's correct. He was a young man that, uh, really stepped up and stayed there till nine o'clock at night helping fill sandbags. And I, I know nothing about the man, just a young man, twelve, thirteen years old and, and really stepped up and deserved some recognition. So, I wanted to make mention of that.
And that night, we went through twenty-nine ton of sand.
Yeah, it was even more than that, but by the time we were done, closer to forty-five. By the time we were done, we all did four loads.
And I don't wanna downplay any of the other volunteers. They were all very, very much appreciated. I think that the city maintenance crew, though, just wanted a special recognition of these young men that really stepped up. With that, I'd ask a motion to approve this volunteer list.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this list of volunteers. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We had a maintenance work report.
Oh, before you go on, uh...
We got a consideration, abatement for parcel.
This is one we thought was gonna be tomorrow night at the board review, but Christina can explain the confusion.
Yeah. Um, this is actually one of those things you gotta think about when we, um, think about our policy a little bit, 'cause I received this Thursday morning. Um, and they asked, the county asked, um, for us to get it on the city board agenda ASAP. Um, that's in their email to me. I originally thought this was actually a board of equalization for tomorrow night, so, um, I did not think about it Thursday morning. Going through it and tried to prepare for equalization, I noticed and made a call to Mary that it should go on our council meeting. Um, this is an abatement, um, uh, for parcel number six nine three seven one. The county's recommendation is to deny, because they did not get the owner occupied form in on time.
Now, they can appeal.
The next step for them is to appeal to the county level.
I don't even know what that means, an abatement.
They, they're asking for reduction in their valuation. As an owner occupied parcel, you get a reduction in your property value, but you have to submit the forms. So, after you purchase a house, you've got X amount of days to submit that form. They didn't do that at this point in time. So, they are requesting the city to abate their valuation. Recommendation of the county is to deny it here. They can appeal it up to the county level at that point in time.
Well, and the city can't abate it. The county abates it. All we do is, the county wants us, per the statute, to either approve of the abatement or not approve of the abatement. If you approve it, it goes to the county level and then they consider it, because they're the ones who make the determination ultimately. If we don't approve it, then they, uh, they, the county has a hearing, at which time the county hears us and the property owners as to why it should or shouldn't be, so...
Christina, it's a recommendation of the county to deny.
Correct.
And this is something new. They've done this with the city of Sioux, Sioux Falls, is my understanding, but with the new staff, uh, we will be seeing these from time to time.
It's not a new statute, it's just that the county never contacted us before, but now we'll start getting these occasionally.
It behooves us to follow the recommendation of Minnehaw County.
I would make that motion that we deny this abatement.
Second.
Motion is second to deny the consideration for abatement on parcel number six nine three seven one. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a proposal of, uh, performing dust control on Redwood and Chestnut from Brandon Township.
Nope, he just turned it off.
No, he just turned it off.
Good evening. Appreciate you. Uh, this is stunning. This is great. I couldn't think of a plan in a different evening. Uh, Scott Tripp, Brandon Township Supervisor. Uh, what I'm trying to do is just come and ask you for money like everybody else does, but, uh, four years ago, we purchased a blade and hired an employee. We used to sub all of our maintenance out. And, um, feasibly, in the beginning, it, it works and now it is working. But, um, normally, we're on a tight budget and we never know what it is based on taxes and vehicles and it's very small. But, um, came to our attention a few years ago that, on average, we spend twenty-five hundred dollars per mile in snow removal, maintenance, everything, all, kaboom. And then it came up on, we started tracking all the miles and where we're putting gravel now and fixing things. And that eight tenths of a road that we have, that I'm willing to offer you at a low, low price this evening to annex that into the city. But, uh, it's over eleven thousand a mile and that's without dust control. So, it was proposed to put dust control on, not just for the dust, but it actually does help bind the road together a little bit. Um, and it seems to help. I mean, but it is a main cutoff for the town. Uh, we're still gonna maintain it, but, uh, we submitted a estimate this year. Last year, the estimate was wrong and that was our fault and we apologize, um, for all the heartache and the, the whatever we brought to here. But, uh, looking for the forty-seven hundred dollars, whatever, to do the dust control and then we can keep maintaining it and not as often, 'cause we're getting called every week to come there if we don't.
I think you have the full support of the council here and before you screw it up, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
But can I, just can I clarify, just, do you guys wanna annex in?
Oh, hey, if you want that road, you can have it.
Well, do the property owners, are there...
They don't wanna pay for the sidewalks, but if you do that, you can have it. Because it's just killing us. But we're, I would entertain a motion to provide forty-seven hundred dollars of dust control for the Chestnut and...
I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve the bid price of four thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and seven cents for dust control.
And I'll just, just one clarification. Brandon Township will actually pay the bill and then we will reimburse them for it. The contract between BX's with Brandon Township and, and them.
So, I will make a motion to reimburse the township for the expense to provide dust control on Redwood and Chestnut up to the amount of four thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and seven cents.
Perfect. Sure, second. Second by Barbara. Discussion.
All right, Scott.
I do, I do have one thing to say on a serious note. I've lived here almost my whole life, but I've always lived out in the country, so I've never been able to give input on this bike, 'cause I don't live here. But, um, what I do notice, especially being a servant now of the community, it's about as fun as going to the beach and getting sand in your shorts. So, I commend all of you, as crappy as it is, you're gonna make half the people mad, but I know you just gotta go. You're elected by people in your wards and, uh, use your heart and do the best thing you can. And I appreciate what you're doing, 'cause I know it's pretty thankless.
Okay, now I have one more question. So, you did the actual measurement this time and you're all good with the numbers and you're not gonna come back to us in six months and save these?
And even if we did, we, we had miscommunication, 'cause on a, it's just like anything. Some people don't understand, a bid's a bid. You accept our bid of what the number was and you did that. You held up your end of the bargain. Because our road grader guy said, "Hey, I wanna make sure this gets done, so when I roll that in, I, that's treated also." That's on us. We can't come after you after that. And we, that's like I said, I apologize for all that missed, it was between us and BX. It always was. But, uh, we got a correct bid this time and it's about exactly the same amount as last year's bid plus the disgruntled amount, so...
Perfect.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You measured right, Scott.
I trust the measure was right.
Well, I know this had very positive feedback last year. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Uh, the residents in my ward definitely noticed it because they're taking those roads, so thank you for all, all the hard work that you guys do.
Item twelve D, we have an MPO agreement that, uh, a grant that provides traffic counters and, uh, provides a portion of Tammy Jan's salary of fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, I think we need a motion to approve that. Is it an amendment to the grant?
Um, no, this is just an agreement with CCOG. They had to amend their budget to provide us with these funds, so...
So, to prove the MPO agreement is presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the MPO as the agreement has presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the MPO agreement that, uh, administration has presented to us tonight. All those in favor, signify by saying, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item thirteen A is a two thousand eighteen drinking water report. Brian?
The annual drinking water report supplied by, um, DNR. We will be mailing this out to every account holder.
In six months.
Thank you.
Very good. Question from the council?
I just wanna say woo-hoo to my city workers and city staff. This is eighteen consecutive years, not mixed up in the middle. Eighteen consecutive years, that's what should be on social media. That's the positive things that we need on social media. Congratulations, kudos to our staff, kudos to our administration. You guys are rocking it. Eighteen consecutive years is awesome. So, thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Item thirteen B, the wetlands agreement. We finally have a wetlands agreement to approve.
Only a hundred and five pages.
Oh, my gosh.
We don't?
We do.
We do.
A hundred and five pages.
Can I have a motion to approve this thing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion. Quickly, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have, uh, bids on the water main loop on Redwood and Aspen Boulevard. We have a low bid with blacktop paving of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. I would need a motion to approve that bid.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the low bid with blacktop paving company. Any discussion from the council? Questions, comments? If not, all those in favor approving low bid of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, signify by saying aye. If not, all those in favor approving low bid of 358,000 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a pay application number one from American General Contractors for the water treatment plant filter media replacement, in the amount of 77,000, I believe, something like that. If I could have a motion to approve that pay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the pay app from American General Contractors, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tammy, how's the project going?
Well.
Little backup on the, with the weather conditions, I suppose?
Not really weather conditions, it's more about getting the supplies here. There's a little bit of delay in getting the material on site.
Stay on them.
But now it's here, so they're working on it.
Stay on them. Okay, item 13E, satellite leak detection contract discussion, Brian?
Actually, Tammy.
Tammy.
So MCWC is doing a satellite detection. They asked if the surrounding communities wanted to be part of it, and those communities were Del Rapids, Garrettson, Baltic, and us. We have about 61 miles of pipeline, and it would be about $75 a mile, so it would be somewhere around the range of $4,500 to do it, and they just wanted to know if we were interested. If we're interested in doing it, then I'll bring the agreement at the next meeting, and they'll probably do the flyover April 11th.
Can you explain the benefits just real quick?
Um, it's a.
Other than a satellite goes over and it finds us leaks?
That's pretty much it, it's a quick way of finding all the leaks. There is an article that we put in the council packet, and it talked about how this is, this can detect leaks 10 times faster than if we would go out there and use different kind of equipment. We would have to walk all the water mains and that sort of thing with listening to vibrations and that sort of thing on how much, or how mu, how much of a leak there could be. So, it's a quick, easy way of finding it.
Very good. Any opposition from the council? I think they're, you have their blessing on this, so bring back a contract for us next time.
Okay.
It sounds like a very viable contract to enter into. Bethany Drainage Analysis Update, Infrastructure Design Group.
Why M&amp;M's?
They're gonna stay awake, you gotta stay awake. We saw this though.
Do you feel that's working?
That's why I bring handouts.
We're having issues anyways with that.
Got something?
Okay.
Okay, we'll catch up with you here. I said we'll catch up with you, yeah, there we go, perfect.
Yep. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to come here and present. My name's Chad Hanisch, I'm with Infrastructure Design Group, and we talk about the drainage basin analysis for Bethany Meadows. Okay, things that we're gonna talk about are just kind of what our scope was, which was an overall evaluation of the basin, and the basin's identified with the yellow and the blue there, that's the entire area basin, and I'll talk a little bit more about the different colors here in a bit. So evaluate the basin, get a better understanding of how it's all functioning, how it interacts with the detention pond and the BMP, document any known issues, identify any additional issues, and ultimately provide a working model, drainage model, and a report of our findings, and that drainage model then we would provide to the city. Tammy could then operate the model if she needs to for any future updates, as the basin continues to develop, or develops even into the larger blue area, that model could continue to be updated, and thought that was important so that as there's improvements made, you can run those different scenarios and know what kinda impact that you might have downstream, either within the pond or within your pipe system. How we went about this, first of all, is data collection, so we just get our hands on anything and everything we can find. The major component is the county contours, those are at four-foot intervals, and so four-foot elevation intervals, so not overly accurate, and so to supplement that, we go out and do a little bit of survey. We don't wanna go out and survey the entire thing, because obviously, that's time-consuming and costly, so we go out and do some limited survey just on mainly the outlet structures, inlets, pipe, few shots on the BMP in the pond, just so that we can build that model a little bit more accurately. If there's areas that just don't make sense, you can always go out and do additional survey, but for this broad scope, we feel like we're comfortable with what the model's providing. From there, we build our drainage model, input all that data, calculate the runoffs, determine the capacities within these basins and scenarios for different improvement alternatives. Backing up just a little bit, I know you guys have had a long night, but there's some terminology that gets thrown out there when we're talking drainage, and I just wanna make sure that we all understand what some of those terminologies are. So when we're talking rain events, we're talking about the recurrence interval of a particular rain event happening, and mostly, we talk about five-year recurrence intervals or 100-year recurrence intervals, because that's what correlates to your city design standards. Your pipe and your structures, for the most part, are designed for that five-year recurrence interval, so, and that recurrence interval, when we're talking 100, that's a one in 100 chance in any given year that that event will happen, so 1% chance. A five-year recurrence interval is a 20% chance, or one in five. Doesn't mean that it won't happen more than that, it may happen less than that, obviously, it seems like it happens more these days, and that's a whole different topic. But per your design standards, the pipe and the structures are based on that five year, so getting those smaller events into your pipe system and out, and then for those larger events, up to that 100-year event, we're utilizing the pipe, the inlets, we're using your road right-of-way drainage easements or conveyance systems. Basically, the intent there is to get it within public right-of-way and downstream without impacting properties, so that's your design standards. Some other terminology that we talk about is BMP and detention, so BMP is your best management practices, and that's there for water quality purposes. Filter out sediment, debris, whatever it may be, prior to discharging it downstream. So in the case of Bethany Meadows, this is your BMP area over here, this is, this larger part is your detention. So your smaller events are conveyed down the street into the BMP into a four bay, where sediment filters out, and then it goes into another micro pool where additional sediment filters out, and then eventually can get discharged into the detention pond. For this system, there's also a creek that runs by, and that ties into the culvert underneath Aspen Boulevard. So the Aspen Boulevard culvert is really the controlling factor, larger events actually utilize the BMP and the pond and backs up into that. So that's BMP's water quality, detention is detention. And those, those are sized based on those design requirements again. So I'll talk, I'll break them out individually and talk the BMP, detention, and then a little bit on the development itself. So the existing BMP, so this area in purple, that is going to that BMP and being treated for water quality. This area in blue, that discharges directly into that creek and doesn't necessarily have any water quality function to it, it's not going to that BMP. This area in yellow also doesn't go into the BMP, so no water quality features associated to it, and for the smaller events, it actually doesn't even necessarily do anything for detention, because those smaller events just go right into the culvert, and now, it's not until those larger events where this starts backing up into the pond that it starts functioning. The other thing I wanted to point out is, this is a cross-section at the outlet, oops, sorry about that, wrong button. So this is a cross-section of the outlet pipe that's coming, you know, a few hundred feet north of Aspen Boulevard into the BMP, and the thing to highlight there is, there is some sediment built up in there, you know, half a foot to two feet even right at the outlet. So we do know that there's sediment built up into that BMP, but again, the BMP is there for water quality, not necessarily detention, so I still want you guys to keep that in mind. Detention-wise, again, the overall contributing area is this entire area, the detention pond itself actually treats what's in yellow up to Redwood Boulevard, and that was basically based on your land use plan, that was as far as it went, so that's what the pond was sized for. When we do our model, this is a snapshot of what that 100-year recurrence event is, and this is obviously, I wouldn't call it final right now, I mean, if you guys have input on some of this stuff, we definitely wanna take it into account, but hopefully, this is about what you see for those larger events, where it's, that's the outline of the water surface elevation, and you can see it's staying within the pond. This area down here, where you see a lot of the blue shading, that's, it ponds down there per the model on those large events, it ponds down there, and really, the only way for it to get out is to overtop into the pond or overtop into Aspen. So that was an area identified that has a lot of localized flooding happening. This up here, again, a little bit of localized flooding, we don't necessarily show that any of this is impacting structures, properties, again, if that's happening, additional topo maybe would be required. This is either overtopping, and, and that's, this is probably a factor of those four-foot contours, it's most likely heading down to this low point area. The model gets a little confused because of the gap in contours there. This area here, there's a drainage easement through there, it was noted that there's fences and some structures and playgrounds, and so that can impact the capacity through those Give you a little bit better visual of what the pond, kinda how it functions for the different events. This is a cross-section, so this is north, Aspen Boulevard's here, we just wanted to run a cross-section through there to show you what these different water surface elevations for the different events are, and I have that enlarged here. So you have the outlet pipe underneath Aspen, there is a little control weir on the pond side. So five-year developed high water elevation, or I should say, we calculated for both, calculated for what's developed out there right now, and then we also calculated it based on developing it out to that full yellow area, and you can see, even after you, you develop it, for the five-year, you go up from that light blue line to the dark blue line, for the 100-year, you go from that dashed orange line to the solid orange line, so it increases, but probably surprising that it increases just that little bit, and that's because you have so much surface volume, when you start looking at the overall size of that pond, that those additional contributing areas do raise it, but just not as much as you might think. The roadway elevation is right here, so you still have about a foot of freeboard for it to overtop Aspen for even that 100-year recurrence event. So all, now the detention pond is functioning well, you actually have extra capacity, I know there's vegetation in there that does affect it some, but because it's designed for that full yellow overall area, you do have capacity there right now. Just some things that we noted within the, kinda the subdivision, when we start comparing the design standards versus what we were seeing with the model, we were seeing that there's quite a bit of water in these streets with very little being able to be captured by the inlets, so you have, you have a large area that all drains basically to Sunshine Avenue and gets routed down in one fashion or another, and so there's only, you know, two inlets here, two inlets there, and then you have the low point further downstream, but for those inlets to take in all that is very difficult, and so one of our recommendations, and it's not immediate unless properties out there say that, that there's some major issues, but I don't think we found that, it was just not quite in me, meeting design standards, and by adding some inlets and some additional pipe, we would start meeting those design standards. The other item that we identified is potential improvement, is down in that low point north of Aspen Boulevard, this is the pipe that outlets into the BMP area, so this is lower than the pond berm, it's also lower than High Point, and I forget the name of the street that runs to the west here. So water does pond there, I'm sure that's been witnessed. It has to pond to a, a good extent before it would even overtop, or it just ponds and then slowly filters into the inlets and then out. And so one improvement to improve that would be to, you have a drainage easement there, and within that drainage easement, we could regrade that and provide an overland flow route, so that it ponds, you know, basically to just be on top of curb, spills over, and then directly goes into the pond, which would alleviate some of the ponding you're seeing there. Eventually, cleaning out the BMP area of that sediment, and even the overall detention, eventually, you know, I don't think it's an immediate need, I think part of this process was to find out what issues are out there, if there's specific concerns, you have the model now, and so you can address those specific concerns, prioritize them based on the impact downstream, you know, whether that's cleaning out the BMP now, cleaning out the detention, doing that overflow or the inlets, or maybe there's others out there that we haven't been, that we haven't been informed of yet, so. Our overall recommendations are that overflow construction, regrading that so that it doesn't pond so much down there and get close to properties, drainage easement maintenance, wherever you have those easements, try and keep structures out of it so that it flows freely. Analyze any specific areas of concerns and budget for those improvements, clean out the BMP eventually. Typically, those need to be cleaned out every five to 10 years, depending on what's happening within that basin, and so there's still development occurring out there, there's still gonna be sediment that unfortunately gets to the BMP, but hopefully, it gets caught there before it gets sent downstream. Maintain the BMP and the detention, and then review your design standards and inlet spacing, and that's for that stretch that we identified additional inlets. It, I don't think it's an immediate need, but maybe when that street needs to be reconstructed, you revisit it at that point, and who knows, standards may be changed even then, so you just gotta keep an eye on those things. So, you just gotta keep an eye on those things. Hopefully that made sense, and if there's any specific questions that you guys have with me?
On your slide that showed the northmost drainage inlets on Sunshine, you made the comment that it does not meet the design standards currently because they're not far enough north, is that?
Well, so, design standards for inlet spacing is based on the depth of the, of what it gets in the street. So per the design standards, it's only supposed to get to top of curb for a five-year reoccurrence. And it gets above that, so it's not meeting those design requirements. Again, if it's not impacting adjacent properties, it's maybe not an immediate issue. But if there is some voice concern out there, then it would be something to look at sooner rather than later.
Questions for-
Just to add to that a little bit, we have sixty thousand in the budget to do some small improvement projects down here. I guess there are a couple homes there that are on the east side of Sunshine. And they are seeing quite a bit of groundwater coming into their basement and that sort of thing. And with that little bit of localized flooding that's at those inlets, by cutting that channel there, might relieve a little bit of that. Or it might at least help it drain off of his yard a little bit. So maybe doing a little bit of work there and shaping it. It seems to be a pretty cheap-
Right.
-recommendation and an easy one to get going. Above that, we should probably clean out that BMP. But with that, we still have some development that's going on there. And the thing that I hate to do is to clean it out and then not have our erosion control measures in place and have it just silt right back in, to where we have to clean it out again in a couple years. With Chuck, hopefully we can bring some of that education to the development committee. And we can talk to them about the inlet protection and why that's important, and work on silt fence and that sort of thing. So maybe it wouldn't be quite, it, it wouldn't be a big deal to clean it out now. I feel like we could get ahead of that at those inlets and make sure that that has correct inlet protection so that it doesn't silt in right away. So if we wanted to look more towards that, we definitely could, or at least develop some cost estimates for that.
Sure.
And then-
We'll have estimates included in the report.
In the final report.
Yep.
I know that last year we made a significant change with putting silt socks, or whatever you want to call them, on those inlets. I think that that helped quite a bit, trying to get some of that debris down. You know, there is some, some silt in the culverts or outlets into that pond. I think we should definitely be spending some effort trying to clean those up. I think Raleigh did do some of that last year with jetting, so maintaining that, that's important. And then we've got some dirt piles out in that development in different areas, and there's zero silt fence around those dirt piles. My past experience, that can kill a BMP in a hurry. It's, we get heavy rains, which we've already had, it's gonna wash that dirt pile down into our BMP, and then we're spending money. So I'd, I'd like to see us put some effort towards putting some silt fence in, or ask the developers to. Because, you know, that, obviously they want to keep the dirt too, because they're gonna be able to use it and sell it. But putting a silt fence around those dirt piles is something we need to drive some focus to.
Any other questions? Comments? Dr. Howie, you've sat through a fairly long board meeting. Any additional comments that you would have from the developer standpoint? I feel obliged to-
We, we had a conference beforehand with Chad and Nick Van Oberschild and Tammy. And I guess one thing I'd like to stress is that we feel that the BMP silt that's collected there, we're all in agreement, the BMP has worked very well. But it's getting close to its lifespan. And there's additional drainage that occurs in the rock beds that are around the drainage pipes and the sanitary sewer. That we've noticed as we're going through the development, and as we take the sanit- sanitary sewer and the drainage farther south, the people north of theirs suddenly don't have to use their sump pumps anymore. And we're just afraid that the drainage around the sanit- or around the drainage pipe in the rock is being blocked by the silt that's built up against it. So, with our opinion, and I'm not an engineer, it just seems to us if we could get the BMP re- just scooped out so we can get rid of all the silt so that it can eventually fill up again in the next ten years. And we're happy to do whatever we need to do. I just talked to the state last month, we are not required to have a drainage permit at this point. We've done everything on their checklist in that regard. So, we'll do whatever you guys want us to do to help decrease that.
Very good.
We would really like to get rid of our dirt piles, but mother nature does not allow us to do that. And even getting silt fences in is impossible until it dries up.
Your meeting was productive then?
Yes, very.
Very good, very good. So, everybody seems to know what page we're on and what page we're turning to?
Think so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, I appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
Any other business?
Real quick grease trap update. So, I think it's in the council packet. I put together just a really quick memo on what we've been working on as far as city staff. Kind of our to-do list is to add, well, let me back up. City staff found a whole bunch of ordinances from all different communities. And then we sat down and kind of tried to copy and paste them all together. And we had a meeting with Chuck and Dana to go over some of those to at least get us started. And then, then March eleventh, city staff met with one of kind of our large contributor restaurants and kind of just spoke with them about what we were trying to implement and what kind of, what their practices are with their grease trap currently. And kind of found that our ordinance that we were proposing is kind of over the top for them, and it was kind of a shock. And so, what we would like to propose is try to do some kind of a, like a pilot program. Where we would pick two of the big contribu- or large contributors, two medium contributors, and then two small contributors. And then monitor those locations on what they have existing. And try to come up with a maintenance plan that fits their restaurant, and then start building this ordinance off of that. Because we don't want these restaurants to incur a whole lot of cost, but at the same time, we need to start implementing some of this and get ahead of it. And within that, then we have some data to where we can invite all of them at one time and then say, this is what worked and this is what didn't work. And so that this is more of a one-on-one process and getting their discussion and their buy-in also.
Very good. Questions? Very good, Tammy, thank you. We're at the end, end of our agenda, is there a motion to-
Motion to go into executive session.
We were gonna do a motion under one-twenty-five-two, print one, to go into executive session.
Do I need to amend my motion?
I just like to say we're statute.
It's noted.
Okay, good. I gotta write that down.
Two point one. Poses in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, in executive session at seven forty.
Seven forty?
Eight o'clock. It's eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. Seven forty over there.
This is the beer license sign there, and then that. And then this is the disapproval of the abatement sign right there.
Just forgot to get their paperwork.
I should.
Maybe that's just because I'm hungry tonight. It used to be it was weird to have executive session.